I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, July 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pleasurable allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you this evening. We ask that you be with us during decisions that are made this evening and all future meetings also. It's important to serve the citizens well. It's important to serve the community well. And we need your help. We need your direction to provide the best decisions for a fine community. We ask these things in your name, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we're going to go to presentations and proclamations, and with the introduction of the Aransas Pass Public Safety Explorer presented by Corey Elrod Code Enforcer Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. You guys know, yeah, you guys know me very well. This group of young adults that's behind me is members of our Public Safety Explorer post. I gave you guys copies of brochure and flyer. So, our post actually started back in 2002 by Eddie Garcia. I'm not for sure if you know him. He's one of those teachers at the high school.
Oh, yes.
He's got 15 years as a law enforcement officer, and also the former Assistant Police Chief Darrell Jones funded the program back in the day. Our posts, we are members of the Boy Scouts of America. We joined them in 2015. Just recently, this year, we've combined, I've reached out to the EMS Director and Fire Chiefs to expand our post. We used to just be police explorers, but now, that's why we're the Public Safety Explorers. So, now, the kids, young adults, have the opportunity to ride out with Fire and EMS, learn that type of training, what it takes to be a paramedic and a firefighter, as well as being a police officer. We recruit young adults, 14 to 20 years of age. We also, we go around to their training schools, talk to the counselors about our program, and that's where we get a lot of our recruiters, our recruitments. We have four full-time explorers that's been with our program for a couple of years now, and we have four brand-new explorers. They're considered the probationary period explorers. They have to be on probation for three months before they're technically allowed to go do ride-alongs with the police. They have to attend at least 90% of our meetings and community events. I just wanted to introduce the kids to you. You'll probably see them at community events. They've helped out at Shurkery, National Night Out, Trunk or Treats, a lot of city events. And also, whenever we have disasters in the city, they help out whenever we need them. Recently, with the water, they were handing out bottles of water to the community. What else, guys? They recently went and helped with Tri-County. Port Aransas EMS was having to move buildings for like the fourth or fifth time, so the kids got up and helped move the Port A EMS out as well. They help out at a lot of the animal control adoption events, too. So, they're very interested in public safety, community services, great bunch of kids. So, just wanted to introduce them to you guys. Like I said, I gave you some reading material, and yeah.
Excellent.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank y'all for stepping up and being a part of the community.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay, now, we're going to go to update by Javier Solis, J. M. Davidson, regarding Conbound Harbor bulkhead repairs of project. Where's he at? He's not here, so we're going to go to update by Eric Villarreal, Ardura, and David Bounds, Dedicated Control System, regarding Skado.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Villarreal with Dallin V. Ardura. We've got David Bounds here with Dave.
Charles.
Yeah, go ahead and sit.
My name is Charles Offord, Dedicated Controls.
Sorry, yeah. It's Charles today, but we deal a lot with Charles and David and a lot of other people in their office. So, just wanted to give you a quick update since our last, last meeting. They have been onsite. Y'all have been doing the tower bases, still waiting on some, some equipment, some paneling that is being fabricated. Their office has been, has been trying to find replacement for some of the things that they submitted. And so, we're behind the scenes working on still submittals, RFIs, which are requests for additional information, so that they could find replacements and then pay estimates. So, that's what's happening on the administration side, and I'll let him talk about construction itself.
Okay, we, since last meeting, we were down here to put in more tower bases and do some tower erection at some of the sites. Since then, we've also been able to receive enough mint materials to really get started on the panels really good and get that underway, so that we can start doing the programming with the RTUs. And we do still have some long lead times on some of the items that, you know, we're having difficulty getting and working through that. And other than that, we're pursuing this every day.
With the long lead times, do you expect to be on time for the project?
That's what one of the RFIs are in for, to see if we can get a extend, a little extension on this project.
And what we do on that is, you know, we're looking, again, we're looking for replacements for the materials that are readily available, as you'll see with the, with the next project. You know, just because they say it's been shipped, we don't have a delivery date. And so, coming before y'all and saying, hey, we need extension for this amount of time, and then having to come back two weeks later and saying, well, it still hasn't been delivered yet. So, we're trying to get verification as to, and confirmation on what actual times are. You know, they can tell us, but when it actually ships, then, then we'll have a better idea of how that affects the timeline. But in the meantime, they're still working, still fabricating things. It's not like they're sitting back and doing nothing. Again, they're onsite. It's just some of those components are running a little bit behind.
What is the percentage of the materials that we have versus the materials that we need?
Probably down to about, I think, maybe 10% right now, but some of them are like transducers, even circuit breakers, or, and we're, we're trying to get other circuit breakers, of course, you know, but we, we're running into problems with, you know, just this week, we canceled an order that we had in for a while because, you know, they guaranteed us that they had them in stock and they would ship them, and then they come back and said, no, it'll be eight weeks. So, it's a, you know, it's an ongoing problem that seems like, you know, every industry right now.
Yes, we're only lacking 10% of the materials.
Approximately, and they're, they're various items, but they're, they're pieces to the puzzle, you know, that, that, that will make everything, everything a whole project.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to do the update by Eric Villarreal, Ellen V. Ardura, and Matt Snowden.
Or is it?
Plant electrical project.
Again, yeah, again, you know, last time we were here, before y'all, you know, we're still waiting on the MCC, which we've talked about being the, kind of the heart of the waste, the electrical system, the wastewater treatment plant. We did have a confirmed delivery date, I mean, the ship date, just didn't have a delivery date. That has since been delivered. It is in their hands. It will be in the City of Aransas Pass tomorrow. Again, they've been doing a lot of items, a lot of things off-site, but they will still, I mean, start to ramp up construction and onsite construction this week. And so, let you add what you want.
Thank you, Council. Like default, as he said, we're very excited about the opportunity to actually be able to move in. It was up in the air for a while for us, but we're here now, and we're excited about getting in and helping you guys out. Just wanted to say thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep it moving.
Okay, now, we're going to go to demolition update with Roxanne Paez-Cotroneo, City Attorney.
Mayor, City Council Members, good evening. My name is Roxanne Paez-Cotroneo, and I'm the Aransas Pass City Attorney. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the number of demolitions that we have been successful in completing within our city, our city limits. I know that the last time I stood in front of you, it was November 19th. And to give you some perspective, what has happened since November 19th, we've been through Thanksgiving and Christmas, a severe winter weather, Easter, a couple of public health crises, and we still were able to get demolitions handled. So, I'm going to start off by asking Gary to switch it and switch the slide and let you know how many have been done. Since the City Council ordered and instructed that the city do something about demolitions, we have demolished a total of 166 structures and counting. An absolute phenomenal job. Since November 19th, we have been able to demolish an additional 25. So, let's take a look at the list, and you'll remember that when we talked about demolition structures, it became very clear to us that there were some structures that were extremely dilapidated, and anyone, including us, could look at it and easily say, those need to be demolished. We call those basically the black structures, no question about it. So, very clear it needs to come down. There is also some gray structures, and gray structures are those structures where we're like, well, it could be demolished, it could be repaired, it depends on how much you wanted to spend or not spend on getting the project up to par. And so, those are called the gray structures. I'm going to go ahead and proceed forward. Gary, if you'll go ahead and move forward. We're talking about our resources and the tools that we have. When we started the creation of the demo team, we have some amazing city staff members. As you know, Burl Smith, our billing official, our credible list of certifications that without his help and expertise, there's no way this would have been possible. Of course, Corey Elrod, our Code Enforcement Officer, Tito, our other Code Enforcement Officer, and there is Renee, our permit tech, who does a lot of the hard work in paperwork behind the scenes. As I've joined your team, we have created legal processes where I was ready to start suing people, and this council said, no, no, slow down, Roxanne. Start to meet and greet the property owners of these structures and find out what their story is, why they haven't demolished, what they needed to demolish. And so, against my wishes and your brilliant wisdom, we did that. We began to send letters and meet and greet the people who own these substandard properties. We do have other tools. The council has power given to us through our city charter to issue citations. We, of course, have an amazing Building and Standards Commission. We do have the Chairman of the Board tonight here, Mike Moore. I'd like to ask everyone to give him a round of applause for his free dedication of service. like to ask everyone to give him a round of applause for his free dedication of service. We have another member here, Commissioner Schroters here as well. Thank you, sir. Please give him a round of applause. He is the engineer on our, on our group. Well, let's take a look at this progress, break it down a little more for you. All right, so regarding demolitions, we have gotten 25 down since November 19th. Out of those 25, the demolition team took 10 down by meeting and greeting the property owners, and 15 were brought down through the general land office where they are rebuilding brand new homes. Exciting stuff. On gray structures, we're gonna talk about those a little bit as well. There's about five gray structures that we've had some success on. The gray structures, remember, the ones where you could repair them if you wanted to. And then I want to talk to you about what we're gonna have to do next with the Building Standards Commission Board. Let's take a look back now and let's go back to those black structures. All right, here come the stories. You love these stories that I tell you about. I have met so many incredible people throughout this city and they have such history and background and knowledge. It's, it's phenomenal. Let's take a look at 142 South 11th. Now, what I want to tell this council is that you have become very, very strict on making sure that any properties that are tax foreclosed properties, that the property owners who buy them meet standards that you're requesting. And this is one of those. This was a tax foreclosed property that you agreed to sell to, and the property owner had a substandard structure on it and he got it demolished as according to this council will. Let's take a look at 811 South Bay. That was one of the fires that we had in our city. That relatively came down strong and fast. However, the demolition team stayed on top of it to assist them with whatever help they needed. Take a look at 501 West Cleveland. You'll know this as the old medical clinic right next to the Dairy Queen. We worked several, several months with the property owner. She actually wanted to try to repair and restore that building. And at one point, she probably could have, but as time went by, there was additional, the severe winter weather and additional rains and winds that came through that made it impossible. And so that structure is now down and we can't wait to hopefully rebuild a new clinic there one day. Let's move on to 503 South, I'm sorry, 503 Harrison. This was a really, really cute house. And if you looked at it on the outside, it looked like it was strong, there was character, it was, it was, it was about some history, you thought. Unfortunately, when you walked inside the building, Burl said that it was in horrible shambles. The interiors had no strong structures supporting it. And the property was actually owned by siblings. And they decided that it was going to be too costly for them to repair, so they did take it down. We had some really fun conversations with those people. They were funny, actually, funny people. Okay, 812 South Houston. This is a secondary structure that we take a look at too, 'cause if you've got a nice structure and you got a secondary structure and the secondary structure is ugly and horrible, it's gonna devalue the face of the community. So we took that secondary structure down. Let's move on to 305 South Lamont. This was owned by a former, former commissioner, believe it or not, who was trying to rehab the property, but every time he picked up one side of the foundation, the other side of the foundation would fall. When he would try to pick up the other one, something else would fall. So he finally figured out, okay, this, this structure's not worth saving. He's in the process of completely tearing that down. We're staying right on top of him. Let's move on to 1187 South Lamont. Now, this was a police push. The police had responded to numerous calls at this location. There were syringes, there were people vandalizing and, and harboring inside the structure. When we finally reached out to the property owner, we realized that the mom, the property owner, was in hospice. And so we were able to find her daughter, who actually had the power of attorney and was able to get this down for her. So we really appreciate that. It has reduced our city costs in responding to police services out there. Moving down to 558 North Campbell. This one got me. It was a mobile home on a property. The property owner sold it to a female who worked at the, who works at the refinery. And she continually told us that she just wanted to own something in the city of Aransas Pass. And she was collecting her money to be able to get that structure down. And after several months, she did it. And we can't wait to see what new house she's able to build on there. So kudos to her, a single woman, making it in the city of Aransas Pass. All right, 560 North Rife. This too was an accessory structure. You'll see a smaller structure off to the side. That one has been pulled down. We've been working with them on the main structure that you see in that building. They weren't listening to us on the main structure, so we actually had to issue some citations to them. Unfortunately, those went into warrant status and before you knew it, we have a pulled permit on that main structure. We'll keep you updated on what happens with that. All right, moving on to 1119 South Whitney. This was a rent to own situation. So the property owner had it a rent to own to the renter, right? The renter's paying it to own it. Well, the renter was required to have insurance on the property and did not. The house caught on fire, it burnt down. The property owner had to take it back through a legal process to terminate that contract and demolish the structure with this. That took about four to six months as well. All right, lot of demolitions going on. That doesn't include any of the GLO properties, but I will tell you, Councilmember Knight quickly called me. And he said, but what about, but what about this address? And what about that address? And I can guarantee you, we as a demo team constantly work on these problem properties. All the properties that you see on here are not all of the properties we're working on. But if we gave you all of the properties we were working on and a summary of them, we've been here a long time. So I've given you the highlights of what we've been able to accomplish. And certainly, if you know the structure that you think we need to focus on, please turn that in to us. But chances are, we're already working on it and we will, we will try to accomplish as much more as possible. Moving on to some gray structures. This was an interesting one, 1010 South 11th. We found out that someone used this as collateral for a bail. And so it actually had been turned over to the sheriff's office. It now has been resold out and they are now rehabbing the property. We'll keep up with you on that as well. You'll remember maybe 251 South 9th Street. This was a little bit of a disaster. A realtor actually bought this property for their daughter and now it is turning into a cute little adorable home. 205 South Commercial, all right, that's Hong Kong. It's a long story with Hong Kong. I will tell you that it was gonna demolish and then it wasn't gonna demolish and then it was gonna repair. But the bottom line is that the billing official says portions of that structure needed to be demolished and they have been demolished. The other portions are actually pretty strong and can be repaired. So Hong Kong and that once lively restaurant will hopefully maybe be a lively restaurant sometime in the near future. 1051 South Houston. They have foundation problems. The ground has been pretty wet recently and so they haven't been able to fix it as fast as they can, but we are staying on top of them. 235 South Rife. This was a property that was inherited. And the accessory structure is what you're looking at there. It needs to be pulled down. The main house is currently being fixed so that a family can move into it. Now, what I want to talk about next is we really haven't had to go here, but I have to go here now. It's getting to the point where I'm gonna have to take some cases, some of these demolition properties to the Building Standards Commission, I'm gonna have to file a civil lawsuit because they're too dangerous and the property owners either are non-responsive or cannot be found. And so we really have to move through the legal process. And you're gonna know this one when you see it. It certainly bothers me on a nightly basis when I think about what needs to be done for our city. 503 South 10th. This is one of those structures near that school. We have spent numerous hours trying to get ahold of the property owner. Whoever owned that property paid off the lien and has disappeared. The lien holders who received the financing will not tell us who paid it off. So we're gonna have to kick it up to the next level. I want to personally get that down before the school year starts. So we're gonna work fast and furious with our Building Standards Commission Board. And Chairman Moore, I know that you're phenomenal. You'll be able to work with us on scheduling that. We will follow all rules as required in the Texas Local Government Code. 132 Aglesby. This is, this one makes me mad. This is a former building official's place, structure. And he worked with us at the beginning and looked like he started to do some work and then he's disappeared. And so we've issued out citations. Those are scheduled to be heard in court tomorrow, I believe. So I'll give you an update on what happens with that soon. But there's no reason why anyone who was a former employee would own a structure like that when we have so many city employees who want to own structures in our city. So we will go hard and furious on that burnt structure where people have disappeared and on this former billing official, currently not our amazing current billing official, but a former billing official who's disrespected our city and will not be allowed to continue to do that. 1030 North Houston. I'm going to meet a woman someday by the name of Emma P. White, but it's not gonna be on this earth. She is deceased and we have been, not been able to find any heirs whatsoever. And unfortunately, from the time we got this property to today, it is falling to pieces. In fact, we have squatters who have taken over the property and are trying to assert that they are the property owners and they clearly are not. So those are three properties, the fire near the school, the ex-billing official's property, and certainly Emma's property that we're gonna have to take higher standards to and move forward on. 166 total. You have a map in front of you that shows it. It's getting to the point where we just don't have enough space on the map to document all that have come down. We certainly believe that in demolishing these structures, we are increasing property values. We are making our neighborhoods safer for people because there's not places for people to hide and commit crime. And we certainly believe that new growth, new homes, new businesses will help flourish and build a community that is well deserved by all of us. Thank you for your evening and I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special meeting on May 24th, 2021, and the regular meeting on June 7th, 2021.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna open a public hearing on case number 2106-07, which is a public hearing on rezoning request for Hogan Building Company Number One LLC from R10 to PD to develop a planned unit subdivision for property located at the southeast corner of Johnson Avenue and Highway 361, being a 7.861 acre portion of farm lot number three and all of the lot number two and land block number 48, burdened and dentified subdivisions, saved and exempt, and 8,000 square foot tract out of the northeast corner of said farm lot three in Aransas Pass, Texas, tabled June 21st, 2021.
Yes. Good evening. So this case is a rezoning application. It was tabled on the June 21st and it's now on the table for consideration. The applicant is here to give a short presentation of the project, as well as the neighborhood group. They are also here to give their view and comments on the project. So.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Trey Summers and I'm the developer behind this project with, with Hogan Homes. And wanted to go through a little presentation I had, took some of the comments from the planning and zoning meeting. Just wanted to go over some of those with y'all. I know this is only a zoning case, but wanted y'all to kind of know a little bit more about the project so that y'all are feeling a little more comfortable with y'all's decision up here today. So we've got a quick slideshow here. There we go. Slide number two, we're just going back through kind of the overview of the project. 7.86 acres. There are a total of 48 home sites on this project. That comes out to about 6.1 units per acre. There are gonna be 2.79 acres of common area. And common areas can include areas like the pool, the pickleball court, and basically anything that's not gonna be a lot with the structure on it. It is gonna be single-family stilt housing and I'll have some, some photo representations of that here in a minute. Average of around 1,300 square foot homes. There are two dedicated parking spots per structure. However, because they're stilt housing, you will be able to park underneath. So you could do, I think it was six is what, Ray, what you were talking about, six cars could park underneath the house, or four underneath the house with the two additional there. So there's really no on-street parking. And I know that that was one of the concerns. I'll go over that here in a second as well. Some of the amenities that we're looking at was the pool, the pickleball court, a storage building, an engine flush station for, for residents to use to wash their motors out after being on the water. It is gonna be HOA maintained. The HOA will maintain all the common areas, including the pool and the pickleball court, as well as entrances and gates and all of that. Gated entrance, so it will be secure. You won't be able to have any through traffic coming through the, through the neighborhood. The only people that would be allowed in there would be owners, guests, and police and fire. 28-foot wide concrete streets. Additionally, with the parking that are not with the structure, there are 15 overflow parking, which you can kind of see in the, the, next to the pool and next to the pickleball court. There's some off-street parking there. If you go to the slideshow. There is a 10-foot landscape buffer and a 10-foot setback along Johnson and Highway 361. It will have city sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water. And then close proximity to the water park, the baseball park, dog, dog park, boat ramps, kayak lounge, and restaurants. Next slide. This is the preliminary plat. However, this doesn't reflect some of the changes that we did make after meeting with, with the police and fire. But just kind of a general overview, the lot sizes haven't changed. We've got some 40-by-60s, which are gonna be right around 2,400 square foot lots. 40-by-65, which would be 2,600 square foot lots. 52-by-60, 31, 20 square foot lots. And then we've got several irregular lots that are kind of in the corners and they're 4,000-plus square feet. If you average all of those lots out with the common area, each structure is basically dedicated 7,133 square feet of, basically of, of area per structure. So while each lot is smaller than the 7,000, which is the RS7 or the R7, if you take an average of the entire project as a whole, it would average out to 7,133 feet. Next slide. This is some inspiration, just an inspiration slide. I know one of the comments was, you know, what's it gonna look like, your curb appeal? And so I kind of put some, some things together here. We're looking at doing a horizontal fence to dress it up along Johnson and 361 with, you know, some native landscaping. There is Johnson going to the water park, try to bring that up, bring palm, palm trees in, kind of continue that corridor down, as well as some miscellaneous palm trees, bougainvillas, or not bougainvillas, sorry, crape myrtles, mullein grass, Texas lantana, Indian hawthorn, purple fountain grass, fox tail fern, and Texas firecracker. So that would kind of give you an idea of what would be used in the, you know, in the thoroughfare, which you could see from the street, the streetscape essentially. Next slide. This is a project here between Aransas Pass and Rockport called Core Reef Cottages. It's gonna be a similar project to that. Stilt housing. All the living area will be on the second level. So all your bathrooms, bedrooms, kitchen area, living room will all be on the second story. Next one. There again, this shows boat parking underneath as well as, you know, just some common, or some... some, some grass area in between the structures, so they're not, you know, right next to each other. There is a little bit of space in between. There again, same thing, showing a, you know, a boat with a teatop could go underneath easily. And then you have, the next slide is the Coastal Run Cottages, which is just to the east of us there. It's that private community right there on, on commercial and about two-hundred-and-fifty feet or so to the east. Next slide. It is in a flood zone, so that is why we're required to do stilt housing, to bring all of the living area up above the flood zone. It helps out because it does allow for parking and use for space underneath the house for both cars, boats, people to use for barbecue and whatnot. Next slide. So the existing zoning, it is an R-ten, and we are asking to go to the PUD with the, with the R-seven. And I wanted to point out a couple of things on the city's comprehensive plan. On page three dash eleven, in the comprehensive plan, the future housing needs for the city of Aransas Pass, it says, "Based on existing housing condition and projected city population of eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five residents, Aransas Pass will need to make an additional two-hundred-and-forty-one units of housing available by two thousand twenty-eight." So there again, we're adding to, you know, we're cutting down on the amount of housing that, that Aransas Pass needs, as well as providing a different type of housing than normal. On page three dash eighteen, "Aransas Pass needs more housing of all types. One of the residents' top priorities is to provide more housing by creating a greater variety of housing types. Residents want to create housing targeted at first-time homebuyers, seniors, workforce housing, subsidized affordable housing, higher-end ownership, and a variety of housing typologies to meet those demands. The city should adopt changes to the zoning code that allow for smaller lots, smaller structures, reduced setbacks, and slightly higher impervious cover limits in most residential zoning categories." I want to add that all city departments, we met with, with fire and, and police this past week to address any of their concerns that they might have with the plat. Fire wanted to see a second access point, and I've got that on the, I think the next page, well, we can go back to the overall one. I can show the access point, as well as police wanted some streetlights. So we agreed to some areas there on the corners to add streetlights within the subdivision. And then staff had gone through and building official hadn't, had no comments on everything, as well as utilities. So going back to the overall design, another one, back to the one with the color overview of the neighborhood. So you can see, fire wanted to access two entrance points to the neighborhood in case one was blocked for whatever reason. So what we did is we came down and we built another access point there to the left of the original entrance, and that will be an exit only, as well as have a fire box, control box on it, so that fire and EMS and police can have access to it as well. And then with, with the chief's recommendation, we had done basically streetlights kind of every, at every corner in the neighborhood to provide some extra lighting. And then we are looking at the, being a rain community as well. So I know that in our Harbor Heights subdivision, we have floodlights on the front of every house, and there is the ability to do floodlights with the rain cameras. It would allow people to have the opportunity to connect into it, and should there be an incident, incident or anything like that, the chief can both notify homeowners, as well as they can send video right back to them, so that they can hopefully figure out what happened quickly and catch whoever did what they did. So I think that's pretty exciting to be able to, be able to offer that. So that's kind of all my presentation. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
The base price for the, these homes, what do you consider each of them going for?
We're going to be starting around the two-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So that'll, you know, there will be options that people can upgrade to go to a higher price point as well. With that, I will add, you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home on average, that would add about a hundred-thousand dollars to ad valorem tax to the city that they can collect in to help with police, fire salaries, infrastructure needs, and other, and other projects. Currently, I think this property is paying right around a thousand dollars to the city and add, and add valorem taxes. So significant increase in what the city could be able to, to bring in.
Can you walk up, can you come up here to the podium? Come up here, state your name and address.
Sure. Good job. Rubble Saldivar, one ninety East Johnson Avenue, Aransas Pass. My question is, you're talking about the average square feet you're saying, we're going to keep the common areas, divide by the number of homes, and cut this great square footage, right?
Correct.
Where is the two-point-seven-nine common area acres? It can't just be the pool and the picnic area, right?
It's, it's not just the pool and the picnic area. It's actually any, basically any green space that you see, as well as the undisturbed natural habitat there to the top right of the screen. And I think that that is, on that one, it was one-point-eight, eight, one-point-eight-four acres of undisturbed land, so we're not even going to, not even do anything with that, with that area. We'll leave it as a, as a natural habitat there.
So to me, it's disingenuous to comment, to keep it in the average of the seven-thousand-square-foot plot, right? It's almost going to be unused, but people, it's untouched, and I just feel that it's a, it's an inaccurate average to put this script like that. It is mathematically worth, that's not going to be used for anything. So I don't think that should go into the average size of like, we're building these plots of seven, you know, seventy-four hundred feet. It's not.
I have a question, Trey.
Mm-hmm.
It's R-ten now, you want it to go to R-seven, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the other still town community right up the street, R-seven?
I think they're actually general business, and the way that I understand that, and the realtors in the room may know this better, I believe that that is more sold like a condominium-type development rather than individually owned. But if you look at the way that it's currently zoned, it is a general business.
Interesting.
You want to come up here? Come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Richard Peters. I'm at one seventy East Johnson. This is not going to R-seven, it's going to PD, which means they can make a little lot they want. It's not changing from R-ten to R-seven.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it said R-seven somewhere.
That's not even close. He's, he's making you think it's going to be seven-thousand square lots. He's not. There's going to be lots of land that they're not using, but there's some are going to be twenty-four-hundred-square-foot lots. It's not even close.
Okay.
Dramatically different.
Okay, my, well, that kind of leads me into my next question. Are the, are the lot sizes, your lot sizes, because I wrote down, you said a forty-by-sixty or fifty-two-by-sixty, are those similar to the other property down the street? Are they big or small?
These would actually probably be bigger than the, than the Coastal Run Cottages.
Coastal Run Cottages.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, okay, all right, forty-by-sixty. My, my living room is thirty-by-twenty-five. It's lot size, it's forty-by-sixty.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And just to kind of ease that concern on the, on the R, going from R-ten, if you were to carve this up into however many ten-thousand-square-foot lots you could get on there, you're still going to use the same undisturbed natural habitat to get your calculations there as well. So if you could cut it into long, straight pieces into ten-thousand feet, that ten-thousand feet's still going to go into whatever lot would be there. So either way you look at it, you're, you're rolling that into your, your calculation with the size lot.
He's just maximizing the amount of houses he can put in that place.
I understand. So, yeah, I know, you're getting bang for your buck. So again, I'm just thinking out loud, is it more advantageous to you financially to squeeze that many homes in versus bigger lots, bigger homes?
Well, I don't know that the last time a ten-thousand-square-foot development was brought up before planning and zoning or council. As you see across the entire region now, and even across the state, in multiple states, everything is becoming more dense. Urban sprawl is now the, the bad term, bigger lots, you know, you're running, you're having more pipe, you're having, you know, more opportunities for breaks. It puts more of a demand on a system. And so as you look at cities that are growing, you know, our, our seven-thousand-square-foot lot is still, that's a medium density, just like ten-thousand-square-foot lot is. You're not getting into, you know, high density until you get to forty-five-hundred-square-foot lots, condominium-type stuff. So from a planning standpoint, you're still at a, you know, you're at a medium density, and you're able to not put as much stress and pressure on city services either.
What is your flush station located?
The, the flush station?
Flush station.
The lift station, or?
I guess it's the flush, the boat motors.
Oh, we, well, we were looking at doing it right here where the road was, but now it'll probably be back up there by the, by the storage, as we're looking at it now.
You're going to have a.
Okay. From now on, everybody that wants to speak needs to come up to the podium. I don't need to say it anymore. If anybody wants to speak, come out, state your name and address, and then we'll take it from there.
So you're going to have an area to flush boat motors?
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't that be better off-site, or no? Okay.
I mean, it's just another amenity for homeowners to be able to use.
Okay. I did have one other question. So you said something about no parking, there's not any, not enough space on the streets for parking, and you had mentioned you could park up to six cars, so many under the house and so forth. Will the streets be marked no parking on streets with signage?
They will not. However, if you park in, on the street, you will be blocking somebody's driveway. If you, if you look in between each house, you won't, there's not enough room for there to be parking. Now, that can't be something that can be done, a red fire lane or something like that. But as we were looking at it right now, it's just virtually impossible to park without blocking somebody's driveway.
She's got a question.
How wide are the streets going to be?
They're twenty-eight feet wide.
Twenty-eight feet wide.
Come up, yes.
Hello, my name is Mary Peters. My address is one seventy East Johnson Avenue, and my concern is, first of all, the flooding. We've got three inches of rain sitting in both of our yards. We're across the street, so where they want to put the entrance and the exit is right across the street from our house and a few neighbors. And while I'm all for the growth and development of a community, when it becomes a hardship for the people that are already established there, and we, we've got pumps running right now just trying to pump out our yard, once they start pouring all that cement and they put all that, all those properties up there, where's all that water going to go? There's no place for it to run except into the street. At the end of our street, we've got three baseball fields, we've got shroomery, there's traffic, there's kids walking from the other side of Johnson Avenue to go to the pool. Do you think they're going to be able to get down the street with cars going in there and out there all the time on Johnson Avenue? They at least need to do something different, and they need an entrance and exit, not off of East Johnson Avenue. It just won't maintain that kind of traffic, and it's not, it's not safe for the kids, it's not safe for people walking their dogs. I mean, there's three baseball fields down there, they're, they're down there all the time, at the same time. And besides the pool, there's the dog park down there, and this right here, entrance and exit off of East Johnson Avenue is just a horrible idea. There's no curbs there, there's no sidewalks on either side of the street. It's not safe, and I still worry about the flooding, because all that flooding, that he's talking about putting all that cement in there, it's going to go right behind fifteen through seventeen. And if there's a street back there, and if you drive down there, it stinks, and there's sewage in there or wastewater runoff, and it's horrible. And you've got to not just look at this picture and see all the stuff that's going to benefit the city with tax dollars. What's it going to do to the community? I think this is a nice idea, but not at that location, unless they do something a lot differently. Thank you.
Do you have suggestions?
Well, I, no, I haven't thought about it, but you know, they could possibly turn it into, I don't know, a community park or a community where they do.
I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Alenda Williams. Mary Peters. Very pleased to meet you. Right. I live at one-two-three Severs. My apologies, mayor. I just was wondering if you had thought of a suggestion, because I know that there's a lot of people over there on that street that have, have you guys still actively thought of anything? You want to propose a solution, or?
Sure, of course.
That's what I, I mean, I'm just trying to help, just trying to put that out there.
So you haven't thought about this for very long, so you really haven't really.
Okay. I couldn't come by and really chat with you. Thank you, Mary.
Hey, Rubble Saldivar, one ninety East Johnson. So again, great points about the urban sprawl, the density, the, since it just came out, right, recently, it showed that in Texas, every single place there's growth is around fifty-thousand people and higher. Everywhere there's not, there's no growth measurably, right? We are a satellite at Corpus, so we're part of that, we're growing. When I first moved here twelve years ago, I went out with a fishing guide, he was from here, and I asked him, like, hey, so what do people do for money? How do they survive? Because I wanted to move here. And he told me so many words, like, hey, most people around here don't have a pato wizzen, right? And so, okay, for what it is what it is. Last council city meeting, there was a gentleman here from Next Lots. He was bragging that he owns a thousand lots between here and Allison Beeville, he buys them on the lowdown, makes a little profit, sells them, right? But he, he made a statement that really rang true with me. He said the average income of an Aransas Pass resident is twenty-five-thousand dollars. No one challenged him, and I'm not sure that's a good number or not, but if I take that median income of twenty-five-thousand dollars and I overlay it against a home that's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and three-hundred-thousand dollars, knowing that the homes that we're talking about, that Coastal Run Cottages, only three full-time residents are there. Those are Airbnb rentals where people come in from, you know, from the holidays, right? That's what I perceive that happening, and that's why I think that the ten-thousand-square-foot requirement would go a long way to making sure these are residents living here. Now, two weeks ago, in this Port Aransas South jedy, like, dealing with density, the council in Port Aransas is suffering right now because of previous decisions where they changed the zoning, now they have too many people, too many traffic, and they're pushing out the people of Aransas Pass. Yesterday, this came out, the median price in a Port Aransas is five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand bucks for a home, right? And that's only coming this way. What do we have going for us? Our location, right? There's a lot of good industry, there's a lot of good things happening around here, but we do have our location, that's never going to change. To rush this decision, to cram these houses here with all the different things that we brought up to the council's attention, it's just sort of like not being wise, right? And the serenity prayer says, hey, you know, Lord, please grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot control, the courage to change the things I can control, and the wisdom to note the difference. We're just asking for wisdom here. So anyway, these just happen to be the last two weeks of the paper, and you've seen them, and these are real issues that are coming to town, right? They're coming to town. I wish that people could afford those kind of houses, right? But they're going to be rentals. Okay, thank you.
Oh, well, good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here for a minute. I'm Daniel May. I'm at one-six-two East Johnson Avenue, which is right across from the Egress/Regress opening here shown on the map. Karen O'Connor and I, we've shared that residence three-plus years. We like being residents of Aransas Pass. We have some concerns, and we're just not the neighborhood that says no to everything. We have some very valid points that we'd like to make, and, and a couple of thoughts that I'd like to pass by. As someone else mentioned, we currently, across from this, have sandbags all the way around our residence currently. We have a pump, two-inch centrifugal, pumping water to the streets. Now, can you imagine with this elevated division, because it's a swamp out there right now? You can't tell me you're not going to bring Phil in, and you get some elevation on it, where's that water going to go? What the gentleman just showed on the slide was this coral ridge on your way to Rockport. What we saw, as you guys saw, homes built up in a concrete jungle. We don't need that. We don't need that. This is what we need. We need for people that come this way from Corpus Christi on three sixty-one to see a showpiece, piece of property over there on the right side in that coastal area. Let's don't give it away to minimum standard housing. No one has, we don't have to travel very far. Go on North Dewberry and see the type of homes that Hogan Builders puts in place. You could reach out your window and shake the hands of your neighbor. Now, they talk a good game in these meetings. They talk a good game down at the bakery restaurant. The reality is, they don't put it in place. Now, whenever you go to North Dewberry. Now, whenever you go to North Dewberry, parking is everywhere. I would hate to be a city official and have the pride to maneuver a fire truck on that property. I just don't think it's feasible. I don't think they have any consideration for green landscape, where you build homes within nature and blend it in. All we're seeing is concrete, and the water is gonna run off, and who's gonna take care of it? City administration. Mayor, the phone's gonna ring. Carrie, we got a flooding problem over here. What are we gonna do? We have to make these developers dependent on water retention to minimize the impact on our city services. This can be a prime piece of property. I think it is zoned correctly. The, the people before us, when they did zoning, I think they had in thought. People that come from another zip code on three-sixty-one, let this be the showpiece. But anyway, I'm very strong proponent on allowing this zoning to remain in place, and we want a developer to come in. But utilize the current zoning and put in a, a very nice coastal bend, aesthetic, blend-in-nature development, and not one of these closed-in, sardine-can, concrete jungles. Thank y'all very much for your time.
Hello, I'm Stephen Jones. I'm on the corner of Arch and Johnson. We've been through this game many a times already, only the RV parks. And basically, this is just a low-high standard RV park. The, the traffic on that street, and mo-most you guys know, it's like a racetrack some nights. It's heavy, it's really heavy during baseball games, forty-eight more cars trying to go in and out of that, that side is just kind of crazy. Plus, the water runoff, that's the main point. Every time we have a flood, there are three sewers on the corner of Arch and Johnson. They fill, and the street becomes part of the pond. So, I mean, that's, that's a big runoff, and we got all that's going on again right now. And this pretense that you're gonna get seven thousand square feet, well, I got the city park across from me. Can I count that as part of my property? No, my property has a lot size. If you go into their plat, you can, this is the size of each, each, each house would sit on. Most of them are under two-thousand-four-hundred square feet. There's nothing saying it's a seven-thousand-foot plat. Actually, I'd like to see them come in here, but I like to see it zoned R-seven. That's what all the other houses around us are like. It would blend in, it would be up to standards. So, I'm very against this project the way it sits right now.
All these other people taking all my thunder. I'm Richard Peters, one-seventy East Johnson. But I just, I have a few little pictures I've taken over in the development. You know, so I, I don't know what happened, but it, it, you know, we're talking, just talking about parking for a minute. And, and I know he said there's not gonna be any parking on the streets, yada, yada. There's gonna be parking on the streets, they're gonna park in front of their own driveways. If you look at this first picture, I know it's hard to see, but I had a conversation or some messages with the fire chief. And I asked him, you know, what do, what, what is required for a pathway for a fire truck? And he basically said, well, go and check out, you can check the national standards, blah, 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 blah. I did, and I sent a note back, and I said, it looks like twenty feet. I sent a message back. He sent a message back and says, yes, twenty feet, it's gotta be twenty feet clear. So, at the development, forgot the name of it again.
Harbor Heights.
Harbor Heights. So, you know, I asked him what the deal was there, because there's not enough, you know, the road, the street's not white, and a fire truck to get through legally, or by standard. And if you look at this drawing here, if you look at this white truck, what they did to try to help them is they added a little corner thing onto the grass to give us some additional parking. That was, that was the answer. But that's, you know, the builders should have known that to be it. You know, if they're responsible, they should know what is required. I, I was able to do it, I'm just a layman. I can go out and look up standards and found out that you have to have twenty feet clearance for, for a truck. If you look at the second picture here, this is an example, I just took this picture. You think a fire truck can get through there? That's a little sad. And this is to try to park them in the full-size road. And the third picture, I actually went out and measured. And in this case, the, the two trucks went to the extreme one side of the curb and one on one of these little pads. And without telling the mayor, it's just tire-to-tire on the inside, it's eighteen feet. This is in a situation where it's gonna cause an emergency, like, somebody's gonna lose their life in that subway. Some people need to be done like that, because you cannot get a fire truck down there twenty feet clear, even if it's a path to the ground. You'd have to have them on the other side, which means we'd have a pad up to the side. But, you know, you know, we need, you know, the builder needs to be responsible, and this is not responsible. If, you know, if they're professional builders, that's, that's the way it should be. But, you know, a couple, just a couple other things is, I don't want to keep this at that. As Trey said here, there were some comments here, some bullet points he mentioned. And one of them was portable high, uh, housing and high-end ownership. That's what we should be doing, is looking, be looking for an opportunity for high-end ownership in the city. And we're better not to have high-end ownership than on the waterfront, basically. You know, not way back in the woods, but, but put it somewhere that's attractive to people that are gonna be willing to spend more money, because, yeah, I wanna, I, I wanna put a nice big property here, somewhere I find the water. You know, that's, that's where people are willing to spend more money for homes, is when they have something that, that makes it attractive. You know, so I, I really think that's, that should be a consideration. Kind of bouncing around here a little bit. I mean, I, I guess, I think we've said enough, but I, I, you know, it's, we'd all go into a lot more detail. I had a lot of notes here, but my thunder's gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have been following the Port Aransas stories, and the Port Aransas growth, and the short-term rentals, abundance, and, and... I do, I do like the subdivisions that have the natural habitats, and the green spaces, and the parks, and the sidewalks. And I think that type of subdivision is very much needed.
I'm Ray Bridges with Urban Engineering, did the design on this subdivision, do all of Hogan's designs. So, I wanted to clarify one thing. On the storm sewer, underneath our side is a thirty-six inch storm sewer pipe that drains the intersection, three-sixteen, and... And the road is downhill all the way, and the area that they're talking about puddling is at elevation plus four, above sea level. And so, it's very wet down at the end, it's wet right now. But up where our driveways are, this side of the road's clear, there's no water in the road right now. I know there are lots pond water, but that's due to poor construction and poor grading of the lots before they were built, before the houses were built. But this property drains to the underground storm sewer on Johnson and to the wetlands in the back, so...
I have a question.
It won't be draining across the street to the other side of the road.
I have a question. Are you planning to put curbs and sidewalks down Johnson so that people can walk down that street?
There are, there are curbs existing on our side for the entire land, for the frontage.
So, okay.
There could be, there could be sidewalks.
There is a curb on the other side.
Yeah, currently, Johnson is curved on both sides. You know, we'd definitely be open to putting cur, or sidewalks in front of our property. Legally, we can't do anything down the rest of Johnson, because we don't own the property. So, that could be something that would be, need to be discussed with, I believe, actually, the city owns the rest of the property down all the way to Arch Street. One of the other comments, you know, that we heard was, you know, the density and these are gonna be rentals. I can't determine who's gonna buy these homes. These are, people may buy them and live in them, people may buy them as an investment. Either way, you know, that's up to the end home buyer. They may buy it and live in it for a few years, and then turn around and rent it for a few years. But City of Aransas Pass needs this type. You've got to get a jumpstart in order to start building people to come to your community. With more housing comes more restaurants, comes more retail, comes more people coming to your community and, and seeing all the benefits that they have. So, whether they're homeowners that live in there full-time, or people coming in to enjoy their vacation. In the comprehensive plan, it specifically states providing greater access for the coast. What better way to provide more access to the coast than by getting more people to come to the city? You know, I, I, I know y'all know this, I am passionate about this city. And these, yes, Port A has a lot of things going on, because they let it get way out of control. But bringing in one, one project to start, jump-starting people to come to this community, and figuring out the, all the great things that Aransas Pass has, is not gonna totally make everything, you know, all the infrastructure and drainage problems and access problems that Port A has. Yes, I agree that it needs to be monitored, but you've also got to do that with comprehensive planning and zoning. When we were looking back at the zoning that has been done here in the city, is when it was annexed, it was zoned for what was existing. You have existing structures, there is an existing structure there. RS-ten was what they put on it. You've got vacant land just right next door to that, that is R-seven. If you look traditionally down the General Business District of Aransas Pass, it goes from General Business to RS-seven, then RS-ten, then RS-sixteen, then One Acre Lots. So, this is in line with, you know, future plan, future land use, as you would, as you would think, think about it. We have addressed the concerns with fire. The fire chief has, you know, he is happy with our plan, with no on-street parking. The police chief is happy with our plan on gated community, only allowing certain people access to it. City staff has gone through and looked at all of the infrastructure that we're doing. It all meets their requirements, and they've all signed off on this. So, yes, draining is an issue. I drove out there before. But if you look down the curb on our side of the street, it's dry in places. There's clearly no water that runs across or down. If you look on the curb on the other side of the street, and you look at where they're pumping water, it's in the back of their houses. That's not coming from Johnson, that's coming from other areas. This will tie directly into storm sewer, or directly into the natural drainage in the back there, not pushing any water on anybody else. So, any other questions?
The, the, the two entryways, I know you said one was an exit-only. Is that, so is the other one gonna be an entrance-only, and...
There, the, the original one right here, and, and kind of on the third of it there, that is an entrance and exit. And the fire chief requested a second entrance. Tech Dot would not allow an entrance on this property because of the, the distance required between driveway cuts. If you did, you'd have to be right there in the natural habitat, in order to have another entrance there. And so, the fire chief looked at it, and he said, well, let's put another, or we, we offered to put another exit right there, that would be exit-only, that they could also have as an access point with a lockbox. Should, they need to go in that one, they can go in. That's why you see the flare coming back onto Johnson, because that would be their route coming into the subdivision, should they need to access through the exit-only. Does that answer your, your question?
Yeah, I was curious, so you answered the question about Tech Dot, and why you didn't have an entry on three-sixty-one.
Oh, and can I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
You're stating that the city agencies are happy? Are, are they happy, or does it just meet the minimum standard? Because at the zoning and planning meeting, there were four questions addressed to the, the city, and his reply on all four was, they need minimum standards. So, I'm, I'm sort of in contrast with you of that. I don't think everybody's happy with this. I think the proper term is, it does meet the very minimal standards. Now, is this what we want for Aransas, minimum standards? Let's elevate, let's elevate above minimum standards, please. Thank you.
I will add that developments in other communities use the same minimum standards in order to do developments. So, that is the standard that the, the city in planning puts on to developers. People building homes, I mean, we build homes to code, code is a minimum standard. And so, they're in place for a reason, you know? Could I have gone for a more dense project and then gone bigger? Yes, and we wouldn't technically be meeting the minimum standards, but here we are, we're trying to make best use of the property and provide a nice subdivision for Aransas Pass.
I think personally that there is a big need for the working-class person to buy a home, so the two-fifty and up is, is their price, where that, they're good at. And I believe, you know, would I like it to be a little, a little fewer homes? Sure, everybody would, you know, more, more green space. But I personally believe that we do need more homes, and I hear it every day. Now, I walked Hogan Homes when I was campaigning, and they're working people that are living there. They're not, they're not weekenders, they're not, most of them are not, some of them are second homes, but a lot of them are the police, the fire, they are. A lot of those people there that I met, and very happy with the community. Those streets are narrow. I will agree with that. Those streets are very narrow there. But you're saying these streets are gonna be eight foot wider, is that, is that...
Well, they're the same, same width as the ones in, in Harbor Heights. However, there's no parking on the street.
No parking on the street.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's the big thing, because they have one parking in their, in their driveway, and then they're parked up on the, on the lawn.
Yes, ma'am. Correct.
I live on South Commercial, Beasley and Commercial, and I travel up and down that highway very often. And I see little children walking to the park across three-sixty-one. Now, the chief can tell you, he told me a couple of years ago that he had been working on trying to get a light there. Seven years. I had been trying to get a light at Beasley and Commercial. Now, I've got eighteen-wheelers bumper-to-bumper coming in and going down Beasley to Ken Berry's project. And that, that highway is getting treacherous. They get off of work at five, and they try to be home at five after five. They're going so fast. So, I, I want to take, the, you counsel, to take that into consideration, the safety of the children that are, you know, not just going to swim, they're going to play baseball. Where else do they have in town? You don't, some of you don't know how long we waited to get this park. And Rick Wattisack built that mountain over there for, really for safety. When we had the sea, we had a ten-foot tidal wave to come in. The Seabreeze Motel had two more cottages on the end. There was structure across the street. That wall of water wiped them all off their foundation, even the two cottages. One woman, with her daughter at sixteen, fled to their car for safety and drowned. So, it's not the safest place out there, being the highway and the possibility of a hurricane. And now, the eighteen-wheelers. And I can sit, sit on my front porch, and when they come out of Beasley onto three-sixty-one, there's... they're so long, they have to come on the passenger side of the road. And it's getting very, very dangerous out there. Thank you.
Chief, what would it take to get a, a light, a crossing light there?
So the first time, she's correct, the first time we did look at trying to get a traffic signal at Johnson and Commercial and I was told that basically it was not feasible at that time. The other thing was is the cost, I believe, was about $200,000 for a signal to be installed. Now, I have also talked to Robert Esasi more recently because that, that's come up again based off shrimpery and stuff as well. So he's putting it down for a traffic study, but not much has changed in that area. So I would venture to guess that it will probably get the same response if you were to have more development, more houses and more traffic in that respect. That could improve those chances of getting a traffic signal, I would think. But I, I can't say for certain on that. But it, it is on, as of about two weeks ago, Robert and I spoke about it again to get the discussion going again.
May I add just one, please, a quick, again, rubble, fell for one night East Johnson. So if you look at the angle of this, at the street, right, it creates a blind spot. So even right now, the weeds aren't that high, but there's a little bit of a blind spot as the people come around the corner. The speed limit is 45 miles an hour. And we had that, the speed radar detector there for a while, it helped a little bit. We now have it on Johnson, it's set at 25 miles an hour. People are zooming. So I really believe that regardless of how this development ends up, the rezoning, a light needs to be there. Secondly, to your point, ma'am, we live at 190, we see children all day long and sometimes into the evening, riding bikes and walking to the pool, right? There really needs to be a sidewalk on, on East Johnson on that side. And I think the city needs to incur like that cost to build on, on your property as well. At the shrimpery, this became a one-way street, right? So people were pouring in, we were blocked, we could not leave. We, we accepted, we. Like a whole, another area of what, 40, 40 times six, 240 vehicles potentially? We live in a steel house, you're not gonna put four cars underneath and two cars outside, that's ridiculous. However, you do see that amount of cars in the current Harbor Heights development. Cars are everywhere. And so I just feel like the sidewalk, the, the street sign, the way the curve, the, the, the study has to be done no matter what, that's a really good point. And again, you know, during the shrimpery, people walk up and down our yard by the hundreds, it's okay, it's once a year. But if we're gonna have a development there, we're gonna have walls and I love the pretty pictures on the presentation, right? That vegetation is nice, but that's not the same as Harbor Heights. They really utilize the natural trees, the blackjack oaks that were there as part of the development. But you go indoors, there's no trees on the site, there's no flyery plants, there's no palm trees, there's nothing, right? And so again, fruit's in the pudding, I haven't seen fruit yet.
Hi, my name is Karen O'Connor, I live 162 East Johnson. And I just wanna make a really big point here. This gentleman has made the point that he has not pushed any water to us at this point. And the reason why there's no water coming from that side is because of a bowl on that property. And so all the water goes in there. But I have a feeling that once it, this goes through, once they have the green light, what are they gonna do? They're gonna elevate everything, they're, because they're not gonna build homes in a bowl. They're gonna have to elevate the land to get it up so it won't have that washout and they won't have the water problem. And what that will do is push the water out and it's gonna push us, the, the water to us, everyone that lives on Johnson. And just because there's no water now doesn't mean there won't be after they do their construction. Because I'm not an engineer, but I know they're gonna build that land up. I mean, it only makes common sense. And also, those two, the entry and the exit are right at our doors, our house. And during shrimpery, we cannot even get out of our house because they had traffic going every way. So adding more traffic to this two-lane road that has a lot of amenities down at the end is not a good decision, I, I don't think. And really, that road needs to be wider and be able to take more traffic than what it does. And why build all, all those things in, into the street? We have one-way, one-way, I mean, it's just a two-way mess. And if you add 48 more houses and two vehicles, you know, that's gonna be 96 cars. Most people have two cars at least, some people have three cars coming out of there, coming out of there, going in, going in. And I just don't think it's a good decision to okay this property development the way they have it planned. And, you know, I think them wanting to change it has, in their mind, they can just go in there and do it any way they want to and stick it, instead of sticking to R-10 or R-7. It's gonna give everybody more space. And I understand we need a lot of homes in Port Aransas, I mean, Aransas Pass. I'm not against that, but this is not the right place for this development, you know. Cause, you know, just think about it, you know, you have the park and the swimming pool and all the baseball. You know, why can't something else be developed along that road or something? And enlarge the roadway, do something instead of just putting a lot of small homes and more traffic. And it, it's not gonna add anything to our area and thank you.
Okay, are y'all good with, with it?
Well, we'll hear, last one, last one.
Just, just a couple of points.
It's different than what we've already heard, right?
Huh?
It's different than what we've already heard?
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, you know, somebody mentioned the shrimpery and I don't think, unless you were there, you don't understand it. You know, it's a two-lane road, two lanes are going one direction. We had plans to go out to dinner that Saturday night, there was no way. Our neighbors took 45 minutes to get down the street to park in their house, you know. And, and you think 48 homes, 48, yeah, are, are we gonna block them during shrimpery so they can't get in and out to their house? You know, that's, 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 that's silly. If anything, the access to that subdivision, whatever, needs to come from 361 or over this area, that, that area he's saying that he does wanna go over. It should not be on Johnson Avenue. There's already too much traffic there and to have 48 homes going in that little corner all day long, it's too dangerous for people, that kids and families are walking up and down that street. Now, shut up for the last time, I think, thanks.
Thank you. Well, now, I declare this public hearing closed. And we're gonna go to consider an act and ordinance granting a rezoning request located in the southeast corner of Johnson Avenue and Highway 361 from R-10, single-family dwelling district to P.O.,
PD.
PD Plan Development District being a land 7.861 acres portion, farmland number three and all of lot number two and land block number 48, Burton and Danforth subdivision, save and accept an 8,000-square-foot tract out of the northeast corner of the said farmland lot three in Aransas Pass, Texas.
I personally think we need to do a little bit more studying on this, move it to another meeting because there were a lot of good points here. There's also some, some points that I think that we need to sit and talk with Trey about that can be handled. I'm definitely for more houses. And if some of these things can be worked out.
I agree with you.
Same here.
Could we move this, could we table this till our next meeting? For the workshop on the 14th?
Yes, it's pretty full agenda right now and I would, and this is gonna take a while. We may wanna consider a special workshop just for this item.
Well, we need to do it rather quickly.
Probably not on the 14th, it's already very full.
Melinda?
May I?
Sure.
Melinda Williams, I live at 123 Seabreeze. I'm a realtor and a local business owner and I'm also a city resident. These are all valid concerns, thank you very much for, for coming up. It's very brave of you to speak that way. However, I didn't hear, and I know you guys didn't have the time, but I didn't hear one offer of a solution. So my thing is.
That's what we're trying to come up with.
Well, hey, hey, hang on, you're not at the podium and I respect you. Let's give him an opportunity to address your concerns like the drainage or move the shrimpery. Nobody even brought that up. I'm, you know, I'm trying to be, you know, move the shrimpery to somewhere else in Aransas Pass. So let's just think about that and give the, give growth an opportunity to have a balance between both, okay? And, and I love this community. And, and I'm for what you guys have to say and I'm also for growth. So if council would consider those points, I appreciate the fact that you guys are gonna table this and do some more due diligence.
Can you set it up with Trey for a special workshop so that we can sit down and, you know, see what we can do?
Yes, and we'll include everybody else that's here in the standard.
Absolutely.
We're not.
Yeah, we'll be at open workshops so we can all talk.
We'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we table this item 62 to a special workshop. It's to be determined.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Now, I'm gonna open up, uh, ooh, no. Now, we're gonna go to case, open up a public hearing on case number 2012-19 for public hearing and request from Jesus Iloso for a six-month extension of conditional use permit to live in an RV situated at 345 North Atlantic Street. Until RV relief, housing can be funded and built.
Yes, this is a conditional use permit for the previous case that you've asked us to review and see other alternatives to get him moved as well as get a land swap so he can get a place, a better place to live because he doesn't have seawall. And we found a potential land still on railroad that we are trying to consider to see if it will be good for him to move there. Because we are not finished with that consideration, we want to request for an extension for him to be there. He, he was here, but he's having some medical drowsiness, so he just left.
What if he wasn't driving?
Yeah, he said he needs to go home because if it gets too worse, he cannot drive, so.
What side of railroad is this land you're talking about? Is it on the seawall side or is it on the east side of railroad or is it on the west side of railroad street?
Yeah, it's much more toward the.
The east side?
The east side, yeah.
And what is it sound, is it also zoned agriculture? The property that you're looking at? Because he's on agriculture right now and how did he, how did he get to have, paying taxes just on agricultural land? He's not growing anything. No, he isn't, that we know of.
That we know of.
Yeah.
Big gold tomatoes.
Do you know?
So you're, you're saying the, the zone is not appropriate or?
I'm just asking the new properties that you're looking to move them to, what is it zone?
Yeah.
Because the zoning would have to be changed in order to allow a mobile home to, to, to live there. I mean, I don't think it's, if you allow one person to live on property that is agriculture and not doing anything and paying what the hundred dollars a year for an agricultural land versus somebody who has the same lot size and is having a mo, a mobile home there but paying the right amount of taxes, I don't think that's fair. We have to be a little bit more fair here to everybody, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, that, that area has a different project that we're going to look for a long term. But for now, that is the current zoning.
Agriculture.
Right.
Okay.
I think we need to be careful getting rid of any land down there because the city spent a fortune of a couple decades ago buying up all the land they could down there for potential Pelican Cove 2.0 that was thrown around back in the eighties. So, yeah, possibly need to look for another piece of property to swap him with. It's kinda stay away from that land down there between railroad and Huff Street. We really need to hang on to all that land.
I think his living conditions would greatly improve if we put him in an RV park. I mean, I know he doesn't want to go to an RV park. He has an RV.
That was given to him.
And I, 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 I understand, I, I don't, I, I know. I know, that's a very delicate situation. It is, it is, very delicate.
Yeah, I, I guess you have to make a decision at a certain point in time because currently we've not found any ideal land that we can swap, so.
I'd say extend it.
That's why we are even requesting for an extension.
At this point, you're just gonna have to extend it.
I'd say extend it.
Let me just, let me emphasize.
Better, better for him to stay right where he's at than to move him somewhere else that's not suitable either.
Correct.
We just gotta make sure we're moving forward to get him somewhere.
Yeah, what, say that? I know.
Your point is an excellent point that you just made as far as.
His living conditions would increase greatly if he was moved to an RV park. He would be around.
Now, remember, staff has been instructed.
Better conditions.
Find additional property, we can't, at this, at this point anyway, we've not been able to. And we'll continue looking if council instruct, instructs us to do so.
No, it's, yeah, I don't know, it's right across from staff, it's the one.
The Palladium.
Palladium?
Oh, no, not there.
Well, it's about his, it's about his level, though.
Yeah, no, nobody needs to go there.
So again, our instructions are to find comparable property. We have not been able to do so at this point. So until instructed otherwise, we'll need to go in that.
So has the city offered to buy that property from him, correct?
What, we've not done that yet.
Okay.
Because we need to find a reliable property that we feel it's okay with you all.
That it would buy us the property from him.
How would he swap, though, but if we were buying the property, he might have money to go someplace else.
Yeah.
We, we, we need to, that will be a technical issue because it's not necessarily that a land swap, the value of his land or property will be equal to what we got to, to switch.
But we don't want another RV anywhere down in that area.
I'm hearing council now say, which is a good point, if we're able to purchase that, that gives him money to buy property elsewhere is what I'm hearing from them now.
Or move to an RV park.
Or an RV park.
Or that, but that's a different approach and we'll be happy to go that direction and look at the purchase or an RV park, but that hasn't been the direction to this point. So be happy to go that direction immediately.
Can I give him some?
Because we're running out of options on front end.
When does his current conditional use permit expire?
Yeah.
No.
Right today. So we either have to give him at least 90 more days.
Well, yeah, let's extend it because we have to, we, we, we have to, we have to. So that's the only thing to do. He's asking for 180?
I'd give him 90 and just keep working on it. Well, we can always extend it again, but that'll get us moving in the right direction.
90 or 180?
Any other questions?
What do you think, 90 or 180? With 90 or 180?
Fine, whatever, 180 is fine, at least we, as long as we moving it forward. As long as we moving it forward and he gets something that he really needs and we're okay with it.
Right.
And keep in mind, if we purchase, what kind of doors are opening for us? If we purchase the property from.
Everybody else.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Well, if it's property that's advantageous for the city to own, then why not?
It is.
That I don't know.
Yeah, that'll add on to some more property we already own. That'll add on to a lot more property we're currently own down there.
And you guys have a sort?
Yeah. And that's for a reason, you know, for future development.
Yeah.
If that's a direction, that's a good point. And that's a direction we can look at and weigh the pros and cons on that and be happy to do that.
Yeah, because if there's more property owners down there that want to get rid of their property for bottom dollar like this, we may have a deal with them as well.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Again, I'm Melinda Williams with at one-two-three Seabreeze. Is there an option, is it up for sale right now or is it just somebody you're talking to? Maybe we could go and talk to everybody and get all a lump sum and then we can all do an average? Has anybody approached him that way, like a meet and greet?
Most of them aren't alive that have, there's people that own property down there because when Aransas was formed, it was a lottery system, and people bought property from all over the world. And there's a lot of people down there that I've never heard of that probably never even been to town.
Understood.
But if you're asking, has anyone had contact with this gentleman? And yes, we've been, had lots of contact with him.
Right, but I mean, there's other properties there, other RVs, that type of thing, no?
No, there's not other, no, he's got a single RV.
He's all by himself back there.
If you want to see what it looks like, we'll be happy to show you the slides.
No, there's no other property, no other habitats.
I was wondering if somebody else could possibly, what would the city do with that land if they had it?
We have a pretty awesome development down there.
In a private session?
Yes.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. If, what if somebody came in and offered him something and then donated it back to the city for a said plan or whatever? I mean, I'm just looking at options here. Just throwing that idea out. Thank you. Go buy it.
We will look at your options that you're raising, and they're good. And we'll see where that leads us. We're going to move away from the, from the trading properties. We're going to move away from that and look at the other options that have been presented for us. So I think we have some direction.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time and effort on this. I know it's been hard.
All the work has gone into it.
I declare that public hearing closed. And it's considered act on ordinance granting Jose Inohosa a six-month extension of conditional use permit to live in an RV situated at 345 North Atlantic Street and Harvey-related relief housing can be funded and built.
I make a motion that we grant Jesus Tenahosa a six-month extension of conditional use permit to live in an RV situated at 345 North Atlantic Street until Harvey-related relief housing can be funded and built.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the city manager, which is considering act authorizing the creation of a cross-connection control program task force for the city of Aransas Pass and designate a council member to serve on this task force.
This is an issue you're very familiar with, Mayor and Council. This is related to the issue of the water that we had a situation with very recently. And in working with TCEQ, they want to work with us as far as backflow preventers and cross-connections so that we can strengthen that part of our policy system. Right now, we have very few policies that address this particular issue. So that's one thing we anticipate coming out of the meetings we're going to have with TCEQ. And they are suggesting that we have, and it's a good idea, put together a committee made up of staff members, made up of one or two elected officials, made up of one or two citizens. Staff members are already pretty much in place for this committee that will meet and be lectured, and I mean that in a positive way, receive the lecture from TCEQ on how to strengthen that part of our policies. Again, very little is written, or not enough, I should say, is written to give us enforcement and to give strength to the issue of cross-connections and the backflow preventers. We don't want to have another situation like we had before. That's what we want to strengthen. But we need to get this committee in place to meet with TCEQ. And really would like, if you're okay with it, Mayor and Council, for one of you, if you would like more than one, that's fine. It's going to be a huge committee, but that's okay because we're all going to be sitting and listening to what the suggestions are from TCEQ on these issues to avoid a repeat of what happened. And we were thinking one council member. If you want more than one, that's fine, but I would suggest no more than two. And then a citizen also. Either you can make that, give us suggestions right now or we can come back to you with a citizen suggestion. So that's what's before you right now is agreeing to move forward with the creation of this committee and then the selection of...
Myron.
Of Myron?
Yeah.
You wouldn't even look at me, you know, like, look at me.
Well, shouldn't we always pick the person, the member that's not here?
Yeah.
So we need the okay to move forward with the creation of the committee. Citizen, council member. Make a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize the creation of a cross-connection control program task force for the city of Aransas Pass and designate a council member to serve on this task force. That council member should be Jason. And our city members should be Myron Schader.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now, we're going to go to, oh my God.
Oh my God. You're going to go to, oh my God.
Golly. Thank you, Lord. We're going to go to city council and staff announcement for July fourteen, twenty twenty-one budget preview meeting, workshop meeting. And it is going to be potential development, Southern Oaks RV Park, tax resale properties for process, city hall exterior improvements, signs at lighthouse, lake trails, illegal dumping, Stedman and Harbor Island, and fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget preview.
Let me ask the mayor and council, if I may, Mayor and Council, on the tax resale properties process, you were here, of course, when that was discussed, and you wanted more explanation. Can you give us additional directions so that we can give the Steve, when he comes back, the direction he needs to give you the information that you need? Any direction you want to give us, Steve, to help answer that question, give you the best information possible? And that's the question we have right now.
Well, I've had a couple of people ask me that were here, how do you get that list, where do you go? You know, that are interested in purchasing some of these properties and have plans already. So I'd like to know the process of how you find the properties that are for sale and what the process is to get them.
Is there, is that agreement on that from the council? If so, Mary, that's the direction of Steve. Any other questions on that, Mary, that you would have?
No, sir, I got it.
Okay. Your housing issue, I think, may be answered, hopefully, in number one. That will be coming up on that date. So we'll have more information, there'll be a presentation, there'll be public on that issue. So that's something we're looking forward to. And that's pretty much it as far as some pre-information we need. The rest will come out during the meeting. It's going to be a long meeting. All the more, Councilwoman Lord, all the more reason to have a separate meeting for open homes because these are all important issues. And I hate setting those, these issues back. So we'll have a special meeting for open homes.
Okay, now, we're going to go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed in the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Mary, any comments? Any comments?
Hi, I'm Melinda Williams. I reside at one-two-three Seabreeze in Aransas Pass, and I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen about three points. As I was out putting out signs and talking to neighbors and all that on Euclid, I know that there's, we all are aware of the drainage flooding problem with that ditch runs parallel to Porpoise and Euclid in between there. And I went over there today, and it was horrible, and I had to rescue. I know that Fernandez had to rescue Miss Beverly. We probably all know about Miss Beverly over there. And it's on the dead end and the pump. So I just wanted to bring that up and to make it a format, to the front of your minds, to put it at the top of the list. There's another, two issues. I kind of mentioned it to our illustrious harbor master. But over there at the cut-through on Bay Harbor on the southern side off of the intercoastal waterway by that island right there, they're hauling butt past there. I mean, we have, we as citizens and homeowners in Bay Harbor area have replaced that no-wake buoy several times. Well, it's either disappeared, rotted off or somewhere else or gone on vacation to the south. Not like we haven't had any disrupting weather. However, I would like to extend a request to be able to, will we go ahead and replace it? Because I and my husband and several other homeowners have replaced it several times over the years. However, it does kind of need to be patrolled with the more traffic that's gone on. Also, in that same area, there has been several requests over the years, and I mean several, and I've been actually requested, let's say, because nothing's a burden. I've been requested to actually approach the council again about a street light, whether I need to go with text dot or something, but it is horrible right there at Seamest and 361, which commercial before you go over the bridge. There's no lighting there at all whatsoever. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time, Mayor, Council.
Dr. Garrett?
I'm sorry.
Does the light work?
The streetlight came up in the, in the June eighteenth meeting we had. It got stickers, and as of this moment, is in the budget.
Oh, good.
As of this moment, it's in the budget. So we'll see as the budget progresses, as it continues to be the case. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go into executive session, section five-five-one dot zero seven-one of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, section five-five-one dot zero seven-two deliberations regarding real estate property and section five-five-one dot zero eight-seven deliberations regarding economic development negotiations related to city-owned property known as Five Acre Track, one out of forty-eight located at South Arts, also known as San Patricio County Appraisal District, ID six-five-nine-one-one. Section five-five-one dot zero seven-one of the Open Meeting Act on, to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to Combonne Harbor lease, GNS Marine, Combonne Harbor lease, Captain Caddy, and Gulf Marine fabricators. And it is seven forty-eight.
We're going to reconvene in open session to consider and take action if any on any item discussed in executive session at 8:36 PM.
I make a motion that we reimburse Gulf Marine fabricators for overpaying the payment in lieu of taxation in the amount of $71,864.52 for tax years 2017 and 2018 pursuant to the industrial district agreement number eight.
Second?
None in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
(laughing)
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
None in favor?
Aye.
Aye.